All the meeting of facilities that are not ordered to be made before. I'm ready, my team is four oh three. And then go do a quick round of introductions. I'll start on my right. Terry, I go to you.
Hi, Terry Proctor, Communications Department, handling the livestream for the public today.
Thank you.
Danny, you can keep talking.
Great, I'm President. Dana White, Director of Planning and Risk.
John Lyons, Planner.
Claire Gerh, Director of Accountability Committee Number?
Gary Holland, Board Member and Chair of the Committee.
Tom Peterson, Bond Accountability Committee.
Claire Berth, Deputy Superintendent.
Karen Brashaw, Deputy Assistant.
Oh, so, oh, we got another one just standing there.
And then, darling, you're sitting, she's a step.
And we have.
First, the power of the same man.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see you. It's just like a second.
Okay, so we're going to start, we have three scenes. Our being of our. From our events today, we have the Board Accountability Committee update. And our own key innovation update, our ADA management update. And then we have the. We have a site say. Piece today, so let's start with, Dan, you want to introduce the. Bond Accountability Committee?
I will, I'll be quick, we have Tom Peterson from the Bond Accountability Committee, who is here to do the quarterly updates based on presentation and information provided by staff. Over, Tom.
I'm ready, but I don't have a presentation. Hopefully, along with these reports that I submitted. Two things I want to say upfront is, one, unfortunately, this is a, not a quarterly update, it's a semi-annual update. Unfortunately, because of the circumstances surrounding meetings in the fall, we didn't really, it didn't really work out very well to do a quarterly update in October like we had hoped. I really viewed to the fact that Benson was still an unknown. And we were thinking we were going to know more in October, and that didn't happen, and so. So anyway, so this is the report for the last six months, I guess. Secondly, you may have noticed the change in the reporting format. That's thanks to Mr. Mavon here, he suggested a different approach, which we all actually like much better, because it ties us better to what our, our mission is or where our, our, what we're required to oversee in our charter. So, so anyway, so I'm just going to cut down a few points in the report, and I have a few other comments I want to share, yeah, so. So first off, we are asked to determine whether the bond revenues are expended only for the purposes of which they were approved. And based on all the materials for the, the areas of the programs that we reviewed this last quarter, which was the modernization projects and the health and safety program, where our primary focus of sort of other aspects, we didn't look at in this last quarter. So for those, those items, it appears that they're doing what they said they were going to do, or what you said you were going to do, and so doesn't seem to be any issues there.
I'm sorry, is that a legal standard, or is that a, our own standard, sorry?
I, I think it's, it's what's in the chart. And so, so what we're trying to do is make sure our reports is aligned with what our primary duties are in the charter for the bond committee. So one of them is, the idea is to provide some level of oversight on are the bond, bond being expanded for what was in the bond program. And there's no evidence to suggest that that hasn't happened, you know, that's what's happening. The other one has to do with the budget. Obviously, that's always a big area of focus for the committee to do as well. I would say overall, the budget is sufficient, though it's not without some challenges. In this last six months, Benson in particular, was a bit of a setback within in terms of trying to understand what, what the full implications are related to the, to the bond budget. And based on the, the. Presentation that we shared, that we participated in view, it appears that there is sufficient funding within the 2017 and the 2025 to make up for the overrun. There's still a little bit of confusion because of the way they report to us, as to how, whatever it looks like, but overall, I would say it's fair to say that there's sufficient money to complete those projects. And part of that is based on, I would say, a very generous program contingency in the 2020 bond, as well as some interest earnings, it's a potential other bond premium proceeds that will help offset some of the costs. However, in light of what's happened, we do feel it would be prudent to take a look, another look at all of the assumptions in the 2020 bond. We really haven't dived into that far, so nevermind for the other ones. Just to make sure we don't have another surprise like we did with Benson. But all in all, I think financially, the budget looks pretty good for the work. The other item we're supposed to comment on is, does the work meet the scope of the work? A scope of work specified in the bond. And as I mentioned, we looked at the modernization projects, health and safety. And, yeah, they're, they're doing what the bond said you were supposed to do, so no problems there. Similarly, are they being delivered on schedule? And again, and this is, this is actually really remarkable in light of what's been going on and all the challenges that OSF has been dealing with, that they were still able to deliver these major projects this last year. And so, yeah, schedule is doing well, they're doing a breakout of time to mitigate those risks, the collective mess off for two teams, and they've come to say thus far. We also, time to time, review annual performance audits and financial audit reports. We actually review the, the performance audits that we shared with you. Kind of really focused on business equity. And we're pretty much in agreement that, you know, most of the findings that, all the findings that are, are things that we should pursue. Business equity has always been an ongoing discussion in our, in our meetings. We, we focus on that quite a bit. And we, we recognize that there may be, as the audit suggested, some other ways of measuring performance besides just the target goal. There's other ways of showing that you're trying to meet those goals, like number of contracts. And, you know, based on the presentation we saw last summer, what the district is doing, they are doing a lot to try to meet those goals. Doesn't always work out, but it's not for a lack of time and commitment on district staff to try to use those goals. But when you only have one hard target, it makes it harder to defend when you're not meeting that target, like what's going on. Kenichi, well, my co-chair, she has a pretty good perspective, and that she, she's interested in, you know, what's the outreach like? Are they really trying their best as opposed to just, what are the numbers? And I think we've seen in the past, when we've had sit-down discussions with contractors, some cases where they, where we did deal, they were hitting their targets. They've actually come and presented to us the past. And those were helpful, because they, one, they understood that we're just as committed about making sure the district is successful, meeting those goals, as the district is. But it also helped us understand what they're doing or what they're not doing to try to achieve them both, so more, more conversations on that, I think it's helpful. We also provide feedback on other items, time to time. The business equity, performance, obviously, was a topic that we talked about pretty regularly, and then, and then we had some special presentations. However, some of the other goals, how, how the programs are meeting long-range facility goals, KDA, some of those, those aren't as obvious, oftentimes, in the reports we get. For folks like myself, who've been around here a long time, and have seen the projects above, I have some kind of understanding of how those, how those may have been addressed. But a lot of the newer members came on board after the designs were done, and they were all in construction, and so they don't have a good sense of how well those other objectives are being met. And so I think that's an area where we're thinking, well, we need to make sure for the benefit of newer, newer members, that don't have that background or experience, that we make sure when we're reporting out, we talk about or highlights how some of these projects may be achieving some of the goals. So that's something we've suggested going forward. I have a few general comments. This was a, an interesting year. One, I ended up somehow being Chair, which I have no intention of doing when I started the year. But it's been, but it's been fun and challenging and counter-reinfigurated by interest having served already eight years, nine years. However, it has some challenges. We, we recognize that the scope of the program has grown so much that we needed to take a different look at how we often report things. The meetings in 2020 were just long and drawn out, and there was some, some debate about, well, we really need this much details. We came up with a different approach and a different format. And so, in some respects, it's, it's better, because we could focus on, on specific areas. However, some of us feel like we should not, we ought to at least have some level of an update on the big expenditures, primarily the modernization project, on a quarterly basis. So we've been working with staff to try to figure out a, kind of a happy medium, where we have some level of understanding of how the overall program is doing, and in particular, some of the more high-profile projects. And then dive more deeply into those, you know, every, every six months. So we're working on some of those, some of those changes. And then there's a number of other items that Dan and Rena and I have talked about, of these areas for improvement. I think one in particular is, hopefully, there will be a lesson learned as to what happened with Benson, and how could we, what can we do to make sure we don't, don't have something like that happen again. We still have yet to hear anything on the Center of Black's excellence, so we'd like to get updated and understand that. And then, there's.
Is that scheduled, Tom?
I believe so, yeah. And then some of the other programs, the Health and Safety, the ADA, they're a bit challenging to report. Says there's lots and lots of little projects, and we don't, we have time to get into all the details, that some, some members of the board are interested in how, what specifically are we doing. So we're, we're trying to find a happy medium as to how we report those out in a way where it's not just a bunch of financial data, but it also demonstrates, well, here's, here's how we're trying to meet our goals. And then I'd like to just add one, one more item that's not on the agenda, and that is the makeup of the committee. This last year, we had one resignation and another member whose term ended in the year. Both were seasoned people with a pretty broad construction background. This coming year, myself, Taryn, Norm, and Gray, who, like myself, all have extensive backgrounds in construction, our terms have been ending well. So it's really important that we focus on our improvement this year to backfill those, initially backfill those two positions. And hopefully, we focus on folks that have a background similar to what we have. And I thought, I just love it. Senior. Anyway, other than that, oh, we have reached, I have reached out, although I'm not as connected as I once was, you know, I'm retired. But Dick and I both reached out to some potential candidates, unfortunately, weren't, weren't successful. We're still trying, still trying, but I just don't know. It still looks like they're out there like they used to, so. Any, any ideas or suggestions? And then lastly, I want to thank the staff for dealing with us and putting up with some of our complaining and whining. But they have been very accommodating, and we're, we're making good progress. I think we're going to finally kind of hit that sweet, sweet spot, where we get the right amount of information, but we don't create a lot of unnecessary work on their part. I'm very sensitive to that, I've been in Rena's shoes before, and having to report to a commission, I understand that balance, so that's my goal, is to make it, to not overwhelm them too much. With that, I have the answer.
Now, any questions?
I do have a question, actually, I have one additional one. It's going to go back to the Health and Safety. And I wasn't on the board when the Health and Safety issue appeared that came on shortly thereafter. And it, how you describe the BAC, sort of trying to get their arms around it, is sort of how I, I feel. And I, I wonder if there, I mean, is there a concern from the BAC that you don't, there's not a way to, like, get your arms around all the, all the buckets of work and the smaller contracts? I mean, it's very different from, like, one big, you know, a remodelingization. So I mean, I'm just curious, how you, how you think about that, like, okay, do you feel comfortable that the lead is out of the water? And, I mean, do you know that from the reports you get? Or if it's not, like, how far?
I would, I would say our reports are primarily focused on the financials aspect of it. And therein lies the challenge, just in some cases, they're using the same contract to do multiple efforts of life safety issues. So you might have water and security all in the same contract. So it's a, it's a common challenge, obviously, for staff, and it's also a reporting challenge, because now you got to break out and say, well, this contract, this much went for that, this much went for this. And, and that's been the challenge, and, and we haven't. What we haven't done is maybe talk a little bit more about what's specifically we're accomplishing at what locations. And, and I don't know if that's a report that you give out to other committees. I recall there was one committee that you report out to where you provide a little more detail that we will get.
But the project status reports from the Health and Safety projects, we do, we basically. We made quite a few changes for reporting them last year. And we have updated the sample for reporting the projects. Previously, we've reported all our financial and scheduling information for the entire program. Yes, upfront, shall we say, we all take a minute. Sorry, I'm, hard to hear anyway. But, you know, initially, that information was all together as part of the government. We moved to a format where we include the financial and scheduling information for each project with the project status update about what's going on. So we now provide, for Health and Safety in particular, each sort of mini-program, like water quality, has its own project status report. It identifies all the projects that are, that are being completed or have been completed, using the funding from the Department of Public Safety. It also provides scheduling, and it gives a status update on where they are, what's been accomplished, what's moving forward, what the next steps are of progress, and then also what works with their safety. So it's all in one report for each of those individual programs. And what we moved to this year as well was basically rotating groups of projects in front of the BAC, so that we're not showing them every project or every program each time, because it is overwhelming. So we, one of the meetings that, that we provided materials for was the December meeting, that was the Health and Safety updating meeting. At that particular meeting, we did not do presentations, because we wanted to have some other discussions. But typically, we will provide status reports to the BAC, and then our project managers will come into a presentation or a chat with us. It takes more time, but it also gives some opportunity to ask questions about the individual projects involved. One of the things that we discussed with our tone is potentially just providing a set of project sites and scope per site that have been completed by Health and Safety program. And just something that gets updated each time. So it sits there, continuing with the project status report, and we update it each time as new projects are completed. But one of the challenges in current reporting is that we don't report necessarily the individuals, so first, our projects come from encompassable sites. And we don't always get into the detail on the report itself for each of those sites. And so that's something that is helpful in terms of transparency. Once we've done each site, then we will look at it. Of course, we also have our website, so you can go and look by site to see what the project is looking for. I appreciate that, and this may be just like a, this isn't a BAC, so I appreciate understanding what you put your role. But as we get to the five or six-year mark from the 2017 bond, and since we sold that whole bond primarily on the Health and Safety, it's just being able to say from, I feel really, really assured that you're looking at the money, and I'm sure you guys are as well, but from a perspective, like, hey, is all of the lead out of the water at Glencoe? Or is, you know, the lead paint out of the vermin? So that we have a way of closing that out? I mean, we shouldn't be closing out the 150 million. Just, I think there's, will be a huge better trust, there's a huge better trust of current trust issue on that, because we can see, like, Kellogg opened, it's like, check, you guys did that. But some of these other things, like, did the asbestos get out of places where it could be, or staff could be, you know, it's a little bit harder to measure it? Certainly, and some of those are work and performance, right? And that's the other piece, they're not necessarily, you know, the asbestos is a good example. We had this much money except for. I regret it as soon as I use that example, because I've heard about. We won't be able to do all of this, right? So being able to, from that effect per se, I think will be helpful. We are looking at this. And we have sent communication out to the community at large as a report on it, and it's probably been, we're probably going to get it and do that. We can work with our policy team to, you know, publish something. Yeah, the last one was really focused heavy on the, like, the big projects that were being done, but I say, I think there's a way to do, like, some sort of a photograph that is way more detailed about the stuff that everyone else can. Let's make sure that things are. I think this is. It is, it is a big part of the work there, and being able to communicate efficiently and with a lot of detail, it's always a challenge.
I have one question, talking about one, basically one board meeting. Is there a process that we have, or is there a process that we need to have? To do one board meeting?
I'm not sure what the process, I know in the past, I recruited a few folks and passed them on to Dan, as have other folks on the board member. I'm assuming board members like yourself may have recruited folks. So I don't really know what the process is. I know someone just gave me a call and said, hey, we're looking for someone with your background. Would you be interested? Sure. Said, okay, I don't live in the district, you know, it's because you represent the board of Holland, and your background, that's why we want you. So I said, fine, and I'm still here.
Yeah, recruitment's been pretty informal, to the other, you know, BAC members making recommendations. Ultimately, all pointies go to the board, but it's been other previous board members who've had recommendations, and not only what happens is Rena and I will, if there's someone, we'll sit down, have a conversation, and then we'll have a conversation with the, like, committee chair or board member, be like, hey, we think this is a good fit or not, or whatever, and make a recommendation. So it's been pretty informal, we could probably do some improvements there, and we do have two open positions, and we'll have quite a few more, so. That's a good thing.
We've, we've already been five.
Yeah, gotcha, don't even dive on it. Awesome, awesome.
I would, I would never drop that ball.
Four more, you're on. Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you for participation.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I want to introduce the office of realization.
Thank you. I did want to say thanks to all, actually, to all the community members, because they're incredibly supportive of the work that we do. And, you know, it's, it's a close relationship, and sometimes we differ a little bit, because they want, they want things, they want information, and we're trying to figure out how to get it to. But it's, it continues to improve the quality of the logs, and they're sort of very efficient.
I would say, yeah, yeah, we, I've tried my best, and herpy cats, and, and some have stronger opinions than others. Make, sort of make sure that folks on board feel like their, their issues are being addressed, but also recognizing their feelings, kind of this kind of happy medium. So Rena's been, Dan's been, ready to work with, by some of our crazy pasts. We generally work through this.
Wow, it's great to hear, thank you.
So we provided a lot of materials, and I know that they weren't necessarily on the agenda, linked on the agenda, but I, I assume they were linked to the committee members. Typically, when we do report, we report, just as a reminder, we will give you all of the BAC meeting materials that occurred in the following week to our report. In large parts, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and we also want you to see what the BAC has seen. So you will have seen two sets of materials from two different meetings from earlier last quarter. And, and because there were so many materials, made a modification and provided a summary report, a little two-page summary report, just in case you want to go through all of those sets of materials. I'm sure you'll come to it later. So before I talk about any details of what's occurred over the last quarter and since, I want to talk a little bit about the past year. Because we have made some pretty significant changes in how we meet with the BAC and how we report to the BAC, and I think you're going to see that in the materials. If you've looked at prior materials this year, they've, they've essentially been changing every time we report this year.
You don't get the colored bio folder anymore.
And we're, we're basically, we've been working very closely with the BAC to reconsider how we provide information to them to ensure that we're giving them the information they need, that it's understandable, and that we're not imposing too much on them as well. So not making that sit through and through this smaller meeting, but that's got some recent projects. So we made some pretty substantial changes at the start of the year. We started it off in January of 2021 with retreats for BAC members, which included new BAC members as well as existing members. new VAC members as well as our existing members. And we essentially decided that instead of doing quarterly meetings with the VAC, we were going to move to doing meetings every two months. Not only that, we were going to not do every single project at each meeting, we're going to rotate through clusters of projects on a set schedule. And so each project gets reported twice in detail within the course of the year. This is, you know, in large part because we added the 2020 bond in November of 2020. It's a massive amount of work and, um, we need to, to, to be able to support that on the VAC side of things as well. Um, and it also meant that we may have provided a little bit less of a fine-grained detail. So our schedules, um, instead of showing every single, um, level three item for each modernization, we're now showing things essentially finer, like where the panelists and the projects. So we're trying to pull up a little bit and give them the ability to do the materials, um, considering that they're all volunteers, um, learning what they're totally doing. So, um, you will see that there have been some pretty substantial changes. We think that they are, um, a good way to report on the projects that we continue to work on improvement. And I strongly believe our continuous improvement and I will continue to tweak the reports, um, each time, whether that is for the VAC or, um, you know, the summer reporting for the committees. Uh, one of the other things that came out of this last year and the addition of all of this work, that we also added a lot of staff. And so this is, um, something that we don't talk about, but, uh, in 2021, we had two staff that left our, our departments, their retirement. We hired a load in. Not because we needed 11 people to do the work, but the two that left, though, they worked, they were working hard, um, but we really needed a lot more folks to support all of the work, whether it's project managers that are working on 2020 projects, or it's central support staff who are helping in process invoices and contracts, who are working on our e-builder system, ensuring that our funding is for our, our communications. We even added staff that we were doing communication with the data and all the things that we want to do, which are, I mean, um, a well-supported and professional program that is focused on transparency, um, and efficiency and effectiveness of all of this. So, um, we've had quite a bit going on over the last year in a issue that we can't figure out, that's a great minor, I think, for the VAC. We have basically been lining the 2012 bond program to a close. Uh, we have completed essentially all of the projects that, um, were, um, expected to be done under the 2012 program. We're also completing two projects currently that were not, uh, foreseen initially, on result base four and grant approval of project. Um, result base four, they have moved into that space, we're just basically doing some pilot cleanup, um, maybe dealing with some delayed items from the pandemic, supply chain delays, a couple of those smaller things that went on, that essentially project was out. The grant approval field improvement, um, we've been working to get the construction contract approved, thank you for that, by the way, last week, um, and getting the permits for that as well. We will be, we're moving that forward as quickly as we can, uh, due to the permit issues and, um, we are anticipating already some very specifics on change in the future. At this point, we think we will be completing construction in May. That is later than we had hoped, um, there are some differences, those are outside of the future.
And like, what are, what are those things for the?
Um, the lights. So we are aware that the lights, the, um, timeline for getting lights has increased significantly from the first set of projects. Um, obviously contractors can't develop and order lights until they have a contract in place, until everything's been approved by the city. So, once we know that they're able to order lights, we'll have a better sense of how long it's going to take to get that. And they are fairly critical.
You can use a few without the, without the lights. I know it's obviously, um, a lot less hours, but it will be a volume.
We would, the construction itself is blocking up, yeah. So we actually need to have the field block available to install the lights.
That should answer the question.
It does.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just wondering, but how long the grant field project has been? Yes, we, we will definitely share more as we know it. Um, but your question, we can't, I think the city is tired of hearing from us about our progress. Um, the 2017 bond program, we've spent roughly 66% as of, um, the December reporting. We obviously moved into McDaniel High School, Keller Middle School in the fall. Those seem to also work in the 2019 contacts and, um, kind of getting a final plan. And, uh, both of those projects expect to close out under budget. We're still refining the exact numbers. They're provided, but they'll, they'll swing a little bit up or down, but probably not sustainable at this point. Um, so we're very happy about the work that our staff has been doing in those projects. Um, it is really a testimony to their, um, their experience and professionalism, um, how they've been able to complete these projects and projects on schedule and people that have issues with it all.
So just to clarify, since this was a question, um, we say on budget, it's on the revised budget, not the actual budget that was told to the voters at the pass.
It is on the revised budget.
I was, I just wanted to, cause I'm making people like, hey, I thought they, there was some, so it's a revised budget, no one's the project budgets that came to the board that are approved.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, Lincoln, of course, is currently under construction, it's still on schedule, it's still budget, um, fencing, we've heard about for the last time, but they are under early construction and on schedule as well. Health and safety, for the most part, what is currently active are asbestos projects, um, lead paints abatement, the, um, some really minor fencing work for the security squizy, lots of disturb work, and, um, our water quality projects. We do have some funding that will be coming back to the program from roofing, from the fire alarms, from, um, the accessibility, and potentially also from Rayon. We're still working through that, once we have a better sense of how much we need to have a conversation about additional projects, um, to utilize how, where we focus that and some health and safety categories. Um, we don't have that currently, it does take a significant amount of time to close out all of the contract developments and, um, make sure that it's been handled. The 2020 program, um, I think what you'll see from the reports is that, um, technology and curriculum were out the gate very quickly, um, spent as much money as they could, uh, get out the door to do what they needed to do, which was quite a bit in the early year. Uh, we are moving a little more slowly on the, um, construction side of things for 2020, but we have moved forward with urgent projects for green energy projects, um, while we line up the next set of projects for things like revened, um, mechanical systems. We're doing some more detailed assessments for meeting and spend, so we can, uh, identify the scope of each project, not just what's needed for the transition from his respective approach to school achieving. And, uh, for, uh, big projects on 2020, uh, requests or proposals from Mexico, signed contracts, evaluation was issued in late November, we do have proposals, we have a kick meeting for evaluation, um, Monday. And, uh, we will be very fun with the evaluation here, the three of those architecture and engineering teams. We're also working with the local repertory firm to bring in a senior project manager for that team. We have a senior project, we have another one, who is, um, potentially works in some cases, and these sort of really large projects, um, so that's what we're kind of looking for. Uh, I think that kind of brings you up to seed, but I'm open to questions.
Uh, so who are the local?
Lotus.
How you get a little more of a link about that?
Um, they are actually, uh, privately based in North Portland, um, they have extensive local ties. Uh, and, um, we've asked them to look, they, they do, my understanding is that they do a lot of the work through, um, local connections, right? So they're very much a work and not based business, um, they have a very deep ties with the community, and that is essentially what we've been looking for with the address of the projects.
You mentioned about the holdup of construction that had been called a tease, um, you're talking about, uh, I think I see that it's picked out again to regular tease. Do you have any holdup?
With the 2020 work, it's not necessarily a holdup, it's just a much slower ramp up. Um, it takes time to kind of wrap arms around the, the scope of each bucket of money and really kind of come up with criteria of which projects lose that money. You have the big picture, roofing, right? But then the question is, you know, um, how do you choose which roof to do? Um, we may have multiple reset refineries, um, choose a one to stop, which, yes, we do multiple reset refineries, and we're going to fix them.
Go and fix them all, right?
We're going to fix as many as we can.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? Awesome, so thanks for that. Thanks, uh, if.
Yeah, all the work, during the pandemic and how that is made less efficient, I mean, just harder during the whole, it's just so, thank, thank you for keeping it going.
I am incredibly proud of my team. Um, they're top notch, they work hard, um, and they've been very creative and flexible in getting the work, it's like, you know, even personal pressures.
Any other comments? Okay, I was getting the update for the day meeting. I'm going to do that.
I will, so next topic's the ADA transition plan, so in your packets or posted online are a few documents, there's, uh, some of them are, are just previous documents that have been referenced, a copy of the presentation from our December eighth meeting, uh, and then two reference memos that are from March of 2020, and we've provided those, I believe, a couple of times, uh, one's about timeline, timeline of the ADA transition plan, one about the engagement efforts that went into it. Uh, there is a new document, which is a staff memo outlining proposed ADA plan changes based upon feedback that we heard at our last meeting on, on December eighth. So today, what we'd like to hear feedback on those proposed changes, uh, and allow the committee to decide if they want to move the transition plan to the full board for consideration. So with that, I'll ask, uh, John Lyons, he just wants to do a quick 30 second kind of highlight of what those proposed changes are based on the feedback, and we'll answer questions.
Thanks, Dan. So just to review quickly the, the changes that we're proposing within the transition plan, first, we've introduced ranges to the timeline for each phase. Uh, so this will allow us to include the remainder of our accessibility commitment in the next month while maintaining the outer limit of the timeline to help for instruction and design issues subsided in districts. Um, and I guess bottom line here is that we've shifted the precise formulation of each line of progress, right? Where the field set is getting put in there is the difference. So with that, I'd be the discussed one.
Any questions?
I do. Uh, so we're, I'm not sure if it's a question for, it's not our question, the board just has to accept the, the ADA transition plan, or we don't have to do anything?
This is, this is statute, John.
Pardon?
I look the smart person out.
The ADA transition plan is a federal requirement, so the board has to.
Exactly. Um, so I, I looked through the materials and, um, I appreciate that it's now chunked by bonds. I, um, I'm so pondering back to the last meeting, because I really appreciate, like, all the work that, um, accessibility is not just compliance, but each of them a higher standard, uh, playgrounds, uh, but I guess, you know, I wasn't, it seemed like we're still, um, I know this is like from a staff perspective, we got to get the transition plan over the finish line, but what I feel like is missing is if we're saying we're not going to, we're, we're, we're going to extend the timeline to the transition plan, partly because there's other things that are important in terms of accessibility that just aren't compliance, so I appreciate that. But what I would like to see, and maybe I missed it, um, was like our, our bigger plan, that I said last time, it's like, I, I want to see like, I want to buy, I want to buy the bigger thing versus a compliant, like longer compliance plan, the possibility, the possibility of, um, that's, you know, something more kind of on the side, but not for sure. And I think that, that's what I'm seeing to get excited about for to launch the group to hit a long.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I probably sent back a record.
No, 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 no. I, I totally sympathize with that desire, I want to see that plan too. Uh, and we've, we've hinted at it in the long range a few times, there is a inclusive place basis section behind that thought, is, is we have a really detailed capital plan that we developed with our community last summer, um, some meeting members were, were still hanging out with some of the transition plan, uh, so we've gone through and made a prioritized list and, and done some fieldwork for elementary schools to build inclusive play down. We're just, we're waiting to be found conversations to, to bring those forward and help those conversations. The, kind of the big document, this is the accessibility plan for the district, is, that's, that's tough thematically because scopes of work are so different, just as, as disability is, it's a schedule, right? You can, you can be a user or you can have sister projects, right? They're just, they're very, very different, so they're not going to be addressed, least fully within the same stuff. They are going to be addressed, they're going to be in the aspect, they're going to be in the long range facility plan, they're going to be there, they're not going to be single purpose.
And I think, um, I appreciate that, John, and just add on, is that we're not, we're not trying to pit accessibility improvements versus ADA improvements. What we're, what we're trying to build into is some, uh, conservative and realistic timelines, but also line that there are processes going forward where this will be further defined and decisions will have to be made. The majority of this is going to be capital funding, so they come through future bonds, bonds to seal the line from our CFO all the time, they're applying out of well. So how big is that bond, how much of it is going to go to accessibility? And then the board and the district will decide within accessibility, how much do we want to go towards ADA, uh, compliance versus these other higher priorities. And we're, and it isn't to say that, it can't, we're just saying that there is going to be some decision making, if you want to provide that, be cognizant of it and provide some of that.
I don't buy into the, the will, uh, the, the pie out of well, um, because I do know we made trade-offs and, um, I guess I'm, I guess I would want to see like, we, so it is linked to the bond, like what sort of planning is happening right now that when you come to us in two years, uh, maybe two years, three years, and I'm like, okay, we're going to do bond planning and here's, here's the menu, is like, that, that's something we can pick out of the menu. Is what, what worries me is, and I'm, I'm happy to help both of that committee, so to get it for the full board, but what worries me is that, um, we rely, sort of like the seismic piece where we rely on some things to only do it like once the school is modernized, and that just means it's going to be like 20 something years for some kids, and I think about kids not being able to, like, play on our playgrounds today, and that, like, that just hurts, hurts my heart, that some kids would like not be able to use our playgrounds because of some disability they have. So I guess I'm looking for like, where's the plan that we can go, you know, we can get behind? So it's not like, you know, it's the ADA, um, transition plan, but just like the bigger ones.
Yeah, I, I think the strategy that the, the plan is the long range facility plan, and there are components that are tangential to that and that feed into that, but there is not one plan that covers many billions and billions of dollars that the district has. But there is not one plan that covers many billions and billions of dollars that the district has in detail. That's when you say, do this project and then do this project. Think if we've attempted to construct something like that, you know, it takes a long to be so quickly updated and you instantly didn't solve it immediately with whatever. So we have the components that go into bond planning and certainly, and that's gonna start in a year. We'd like to start planning about 18 months. Because these conversations are hard and there are trade offs. So we'd like to have a long ramp up to bond planning. So we can, we don't know what the size of that next box is from the beginning. We've got a general idea of what some of our needs are. And when I say needs, I'm thinking of things like deferred maintenance and the things that we need fixed. It doesn't include all the other things that we might want to have that we haven't even actually identified yet and certainly have a cost. So it's, it's taking all those things, putting them into that right side.
So maybe I can just illustrate two examples. I would just say on the satisfaction, they're just very disparate. So our playground type of present plan has a detailed list of our elementary schools. They're prioritized with some idea of scope. And our scope, for instance, playgrounds developed with district community members. Again, that's hinted at in the long range facility plan. I have the capital plan, share it embedded with our community. The spectrum is looking closely at it for their share of. They signal that they're very interested in certain sort of work. We don't know what that means. Yes, we'll get there. The other end of the spectrum here is restaurants. We hear a loud and clear that ADA restaurants can be as small as 30 square meters. What we're looking for to support someone in motorized wheelchair and youth support staff is closer to 300 square meters. This is a lot of, in excruciating detail. So in new builds and optimizations and in part with the 2025, we're gonna get closer to that. We're not gonna do 300 square feet. We probably won't 300 square feet everywhere. But but that's just, that's just the, that's the guiding path. Those are very different disabilities and very different communities. Those are just very different.
Yeah, well, pretty fun to mess with. So you're saying you don't have both of those.
I have one question. So I'm looking at phase three, phase four, and it's like all of it depends on between each. You have contingency that doesn't happen.
Capital improvements, significant capital improvements ostensibly are funded from general application bonds. We do have other capital funding, but it's pretty limited. It would not be able to complete any of this whole scope. And it needs to basically cover anything that's not bond funded. So outside bond funding, it would be a pretty significant challenge to. Or anything close to.
So we have purposely created a long term financial plan to support the capital that's needed and projects that are needed in this district. And it is on a every four year timeline. And we're keeping a level levy rate, being in the same factory for our patrons. And that's something that the board has been committed to in the past. We hope to continue to do.
Any of this compared on the general.
No, none of the capital improvements are.
Any of ADA.
Dan, John.
It's very at home, very piecemeal, funded as needed basis, but now there's.
Well, there's some fluctuation in the enrollment down. People have some, it could be some. So plus it in, but that one does have that.
This plan, yeah, it certainly, we complete improvements throughout the year. We, our facilities, people complete hundreds of different, small projects. And some of those might be general fund, might be accessibility. This plan is focused on general.
And so the equipment, the 33 million that the board earmarked in the the bond, that would be, that would cover phase one and phase two, which is all the main floors. Still we have last time, the primary reason why is that the same, you can't do the other piece is the elevators and what a piece in here about why the elevator is making this complicated. That, that's the essence of why. At least for the ADA compliance, not the, not the world we, accessible world we want, but the ADA compliance, that's the main issue.
That's good. That's the primary driver, just the ability to complete a large number of elevators in short.
These are almost like elevators in existing buildings already.
I'm sorry, sir.
These are elevators that's in existing buildings already.
That's, that's what this is probably, where we have accessibility, when you get to multiple floors, that is, yes, constructing elevators in existing buildings, which, John, by speaking, is obviously spread an eye or arenas. That's not always the ideal situation. When you have an existing structure and you're going to add an elevator, it's really where is it feasible to put it? It still might be a student has to, or any individual has to go a long way to travel to get to an elevator to come back. Whereas when it is through a modernization reconstruction, you could optimize that location for the individuals being used.
As opposed to mostly trying to make issues better right now.
Correct.
Any other questions? Comments? Awesome. All right, so I think we're gonna see if we're gonna move this to the full board with the recommendation. Do we, is this something we have to vote on?
The board, the board does, but so you just recommend the full, the full board for consideration.
Those are right.
Just what's worth, I know I think you said, you could be some questions to add about that later, so I'll have some preliminary, some additional questions to follow up on.
Okay.
I understand.
Yeah, no problem.
The last thing on the agenda is the Wicker Adams site and the state rich village that came in from city. So we're gonna keep this, I'm just here to kind of show. So I'm going to not recommend this to go to the board at all. I, for me, I have a couple of reasons why. One, that's not really in our mission, our PPS mission. Two, we have other needs that possibly come up, for access to the tub and relocation piece, so we, we're gonna need to keep our options open in order to be able to make sure that first and foremost, we're taking care of our kids that y'all are here to do. So with that, I'm not, I'm not recommended to go to the full board at all. Any other comments? Howard, you got anything you wanna say?
I do, but I'm gonna let.
Director Green, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say that I'll let Director Green go first.
You might not wanna go after him.
It has been a full day. Can y'all see and hear me right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my, I don't have any words to say right now, but thank y'all for letting me be a part. I've been having internet problems, so that's why I keep turning my video off. Cause it's been, I've been able to stay connected and at least listen.
Awesome. All right, any other comments?
Um, I'm gonna, are we gonna actually even vote on it or vote on the recommendation not to send it to the full board?
That's the motion.
Yeah, so, and I'm sure Director Green seconded it.
I did.
He's.
There you go.
Yeah, I guess I'll second that. So I'm gonna support the motion. I think it's the right call and I appreciate the work that Commissioner Ryan is doing to really approach what is, you know, one of our most challenging issues as a city. Having said that, I think the Wicker site is just the wrong, the wrong location for, for reasons. It doesn't fit with our mission. As you mentioned, it is adjacent to a park that is very well used, community hub. I think we as a district, because of our history with that site, with the closing of Whittaker, closing Adams and the closing of Whittaker, the radon issues, as you will have, share homes, we have a long, not necessarily, PBS is a long, not necessarily good relationship with the site and the community. And for me, it seems that when we think about that site, how is it to sort of maximize how we support our students and families with that property? And I know we have some projects on the table and initiatives that could actually really turn what is a that specific site, not the park site, but underutilized community resource to, I guess, make better use of.
All right. And I do, I do wanna thank PPS staff, that many guys worked with the city about this. And so, I mean, anytime we have a emergency, I see why the emergency is great that we have organizations willing to come together to brainstorm, to try to figure out solutions versus getting our little silos. So I do want to appreciate everybody with that. And if you do have a site that you're not going to be using, that's gonna directly affect our kids, if we can put those suggestions out to the, to the city to help with that issue, that would be great. If we don't, we don't, and we just wanted to thank everyone for stepping up to the plate when there's an issue that that is pressing our city, because we're in the city and this is, just even though it's about our kids, our kids are in the city and and to be able to step up to the plate and work with our different organizations, government agencies, what we should be striving to do. So I want to thank you guys. All right, any other questions, comments around this?
There apparently not.
Okay. All right, so since we're not going to recommend this to the full board, I would have for throughout the call for whole grand meeting. After that, any public comments?
Yes. We have my president and. This was actually for the insider.
Yeah.
This is probably not the last thing on the, so. Are we gonna vote on, but this is not public comment on the thing we're gonna vote on right now.
It's public comment, it's a public comment.
John. There we go. There we go.
Yeah. That matters. So we.
Hello, Mr. Robin.
Hi, I have a process question. I thought you just voted the ADA transition plan out of committee to the full board. And so I'm curious why I wasn't allowed to comment before you voted on that?
Good question. So usually I have just all public comments at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, but usually if you're doing a vote, taking a procedural step, public comment on that issue happens before you take your procedural step.
Good. No, I know that. Thank, thank for that.
Well, so will you go back and revote after my public comment?
I don't think we need to. I mean, I don't think the vote's gonna change.
Oh, so my public comment is valueless, is that's what you're saying?
No, I mean, if you want, I mean, if you want to talk about it, I don't think, I don't think the vote is gonna change as far as, you know.
How do you know the vote's not gonna change when you haven't listened to me? And I would appreciate if you would learn what procedure and courtesy is.
Okay, I got that. So do you wanna speak?
I want you to rescind your vote and vote after I speak.
Yeah, we probably won't do that. So do you wanna speak now?
Yes, I wanna speak now under protest. Start your timer. I'll take my two minutes. I don't have well-developed remarks or comments because once again, staff didn't extend us the courtesy of sharing their decision in advance. And they didn't post their decision in a timely manner. Your decision adds 20 more years of oppression to the disability community. The wording is nothing more than bureaucratic mumbo jumbo and says that we'll try, we will try in 20 years to meet the federal law requirements. Contrary to your small outreach sample, this is not about access to place structures. It's about fair and equitable and humane treatment. It's about access to buildings. It's about discriminating against the disability community, which you've done for the last 30 years. We are not satisfied. We will try this decision in the court of public opinion and we will not rest until you, the board, reverse staff and do the right thing. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.